Try to hear me? Okay, it's nine o'clock. Jacob, you might want to turn mine up just a hair, please. If you can do it without it screaming. Okay, it's nine o'clock. We're gonna try to get started this morning. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the October 27th Board of County Commissioners Meeting, and we're gonna start with an invocation by Ted Stackpole, and we're going to then be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Harvey. Please stand if you can.
Would you back your heads with me, please? Dear God, the Father Almighty, you are above all, possess all, and know all. This morning, we paused for a moment to lift up our nation, our state, and our county. In this season of leadership selection, we pray that your hand would guide our process to place the chosen men and women in their offices for this season. We're seeking a time of unity for our nation, mutual respect for each other's differences, and kindness for the less fortunate. We continue to pray for the safety and well-being of our friends and neighbors as we believe for a breakthrough in the midst of this pandemic. And today, I lift up this board of commissioners as they conduct business for the good of the people, help them to be guided by accurate information, honorable motivation, and the wisdom of the Holy Spirit. We are grateful that we can pause for a moment to call on your name before the beginning of this business today. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Can you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stackpole and Commissioner Harvey. The chair will entertain the approval of the minutes from the...
I'll move for approval of the minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're gonna recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting at this time, and we're going to call the Port Authority meeting to order. Are there any public comments on the Port Authority at this time? Seeing none. Item B on the Port Authority is the General Services. So you just want to handle that as a consent agenda item? Okay. Does anybody have a problem handling that as a consent agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item B on the Port Authority consent agenda item.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Item C on the agenda is also on the addendum, some additional information that was added to it, some revised documents. I'm assuming that everybody had the chance to look at that. Who's taking that item?
We're talking about, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Three C on the Port Authority?
The resolution? Yeah, I can take that, sir.
Yes.
If you don't mind. We also have Mr. Josh Gabotan, who is our federal lobbyist with us here today for the resolution as well. This is a resolution that we requested at the last workshop is for support from the Board of County Commissioners to assist us with our Army Corps of Engineers project out at the barge port. We're seeking some federal funding to do some feasibility studies, as well as some reconstruction and making our barge port a more robust, multimodal type of port where we can assist some of the businesses that are currently out there, such as Lafarge and Veritas Steel and our shipbuilders. So this is an opportunity that we've asked the Board of County Commissioners that they would support this resolution here this morning.
Rich, does this resolution need to be read out loud?
Actually, no, Mr. Chair. Resolutions do not, and there's just the short title for it, so no.
Okay, so all we need to do is read aloud the short title?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Putnam County Commission Resolution, Talking Point to Support the Barge Port redevelopment project.
As amended?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to support the resolution as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Is there any general discussion to come before the Port Authority today?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just take a point of reference here for Mr. Gabotan, who did fly down today from DC to be here. He has worked tirelessly on this project for several years. This project was started, I think, about three years ago. And so, you know, just wanted to say publicly, thank you, Mr. Gabotan, for all your work in DC and for what you do for the citizens of Putnam County and for the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Josh, would you like to come forward and say anything this morning? It's up to you. You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Any reason to leave DC? I will do. But as you know, thank you for your support in Washington. This project has taken very, very good motion. Right now, we are on a list to get funded if the budget does happen end of this year. Look forward to seeing the commission in Washington. Commissioner Turner, Harvey, Pickens. Any questions? I'm glad to answer anything.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Josh, this morning, I got an email from one of our constituents, Mr. Hotelin. He's got an island that he's concerned about that is being kind of washed away by the river, if you will. And in other areas, they have taken, if this is successful in dredging, he would like for us to entertain the thought of moving that material over to that island.
That'd be removal.
And it has been done before.
It has, yes.
So I'll forward you that email, so you'll have it.
Please do, sir.
But it was, I think it was a pretty good idea that he had today, so.
Okay, look forward to the email, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Is there any further general discussion on the Port Authority? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the Port Authority meeting and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'll go to 4A, a presentation by Cheryl Lynch from the Small Business Development Center. Morning, Cheryl.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
How's everybody doing? We have our third quarter report. Be happy to answer any questions. I would like to highlight the jobs created and retained section of 120. That's due to the PPP loans, the idle loans, some of the grants that the county has handed out as well. So that's where those numbers come into play that we've been able to track. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them pertaining to the report. I do have an update regarding the First Coast Fresh Food Innovation Center. We've been in a lot of discussions with DEO, Sean Lewis and Mike Donapoli, along with the Northeast Florida Regional Council, trying to uncover additional grants that may be available that the county could apply for. They did come up with the Rural Infrastructure Grant that's available, trying to figure out the terminology to see if we can slide in through that pathway. Did want an update. We were working with Matt previously on the Florida Jobs Grants, Growth Fund Grants, and we know Matt's moving on, so was looking forward to finding out who we would work with next as our liaison with the county in moving this project forward.
Commissioner Rawls?
Can you speak to the second round of PPP and if it's approved, what they're focusing on as far as getting the money out and who targeting?
It would probably more so towards smaller businesses. Until something gets passed in Congress, it's all up in the air. So, I mean, we're hoping that it'll go through because smaller businesses are suffering in these circumstances, so we're hoping that it will be geared towards that. There are still funds available for small businesses in rural areas. We just don't have the ability to go after a second round just yet.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Jacob, can you turn the volume up some, please? I think everybody in here is having some trouble hearing.
I'm having trouble.
Yeah, myself included, but I'm old, so.
Testing, testing, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Better here? Okay. Please, if you guess where you can't hear, would please somebody raise their hand and just let me know, and I'll see if, we got a brand-new system back there. This is the first day it's being used, so we're trying to get it there. Don't make it howl, Jacob. Any other further questions of Ms. Lynch at this time? Thank you, Cheryl, appreciate you.
I do have one more item to address pertaining to the Food Innovation Center. Amokale has created the Culinary Accelerator in their area, which is similar to what we're trying to do here in our area. If you go to CollierEDO.org, you can take a virtual tour of what they've put together. We're also trying to arrange a question-and-answer session, if any of you are interested, in finding out more of how they got their funding, who's running it, how it's working out for them. David Dinkins and myself are trying to get that set up currently with one of the IFIS folks down in Amokale currently. And just looking forward to a name of somebody we can work with, provided, working with the county for grants applications going forward. Northeast Florida Regional Council said Sam Sullivan. Not sure if that's the correct person that we should be working with, or...
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Lynch is welcome to reach out to me. We'll work together and make sure we get you taken care of.
Okay, perfect. And we also want to thank Mr. Suggs, our MOU, for the next year, with the city and the county are all in place, so SBDC is gonna be here for another year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
Cheryl. I, Commissioner Goddard stepped down off of the Regional Planning Council, and I stepped into that spot, so I'll be the first vice president, moving to president next year. So anything I can do to help, I did see it on our agenda, Pat, we did talk about it the other day at the Planning Council, but anything I can do to help also, reach out to me, okay?
I would recommend having a conversation with Mayor Sean Baldwin to see what they did in their area. They put in a grocery store.
Okay.
And they're excited about this potential project being a feeder for them in that area, so, but yeah, no, appreciate it. And anything I can do to help with your position in that regard as well, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, and with that, we're going to move into the presentation of the Statute Relocation Committee recommendations.
Mr. Julienne?
Hmm? Well, on the addendum, they've got it as item B. Which would make Julienne item C on the current agenda. Mr. Troyano?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board members. My name is Jim Troyano, and I bring you a message from the 11 board members, committee members, that this board selected to identify potential locations for the Confederate statute, which is currently located at the Putnam County Courthouse to be relocated. Many of those committee members are here today, and the message, in no particular order, are three locations. The first is Veterans Memorial Park, the second is Melrose Heritage Park, and the third, keeping the statute where it is. Mr. Chair, the board members, the committee, has exercised the authority you've given them to identify locations, and their task is completed. And Mr. Chair, my presentation to you at this time is at an end, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Troyano at this time? Okay, I don't think we do, thank you.
I do have a question. Has a committee come forward to you that's going to be trying to represent those that want to move the statue?
Mr. Chair, can he repeat the question one more time, please?
Has anyone come to you as a committee, as a, as an entity of any type, willing to pay to move that statue at this time?
Mr. Chair, the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation today, Jim. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I know one of the sites was Melrose, and if it would be all right with the board, they've requested that I come out on November 5th, on Thursday, to have some meetings with the Historic Melrose Association. So I'm just looking for the thumbs up to go out there and talk to the people out there about their feelings in Melrose.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Goddard?
I just want to put this out there. There's been three, three distinct areas. One's Veterans Park, we're some out in Melrose, and then leave it where it is. But no one has come up with who's gonna pay for this, because we're not. This is gonna be paid for by private entities. It was very clear from the very beginning. And so I want to put this out there. I really believe that those who are paying for it need to really come up here and decide where they want to put it. If you want to move it across to Veterans Park, you're looking at, my understanding, about a quarter of a million dollars. I have no idea what it costs to move it to Melrose. I assume it's the same cost, maybe a little bit more. And then, of course, the third one, it costs nothing to leave it right where it is. Now...
Okay, now, we're gonna try to keep this in order, all right, guys?
What I'm saying, though, is those who are gonna pay for this really should be the ones in here coming up with this thing, because I want to see a time limit. And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about this. I think we ought to give them four months, and I think that's reasonable, to come up with the money to move this, if they're gonna move it, and then where they're gonna move it. And if, if you can come up with half the amount, I'd say we might be able to do an extension. If you can't come up with the amount, even half of it, in four months, then I think the discussion should be mute. It should be ended. If you're not gonna pay to move it, then leave it exactly where it is. And I will throw this out there, though. If you're going to leave it right where it is, then why not come up with the money to put another statue that you're proud of right over there next to it? And I think I'm gonna leave it right there.
Commissioner Rawls?
Just have a question and a comment. Are we taking action on this today?
Well, we haven't made that decision, Commissioner. I think Commissioner Harvey just asked for it to be extended where he could go meet with the people in Melrose on Thursday.
So it comes as no surprise to anyone, we were given an opportunity to do what the citizens asked, which was to put this on the ballot prior to the November election. That day has passed. We have another opportunity to put this on the ballot in 2022, which I think would be the right thing to do. If not, I think we should just leave it where it sits.
Commissioner Pickens?
I, um... This has been the damnedest thing that I've ever had to put up with in my life. But it's one of the reasons I ran, to be a commissioner, to make the tough decisions. I don't feel we need to make a decision today. And if you think we're kicking it down the can, down the road, that's your problem. It's not my problem. I think we need to take this to, we need to take this to a workshop, and we need to come out unified to what we're gonna do. We voted to relocate it. Okay, that's what the vote was, whether you liked it or not. I'm wondering how one of the locations, one of the, one of the suggestions was to keep it where it is. But that was a committee that we selected, and that's what they came up with. So these are recommendations back to the board. The board will have the final say. I agree with Commissioner Harvey. If he wants to go to Melrose, I wouldn't mind going with you, but I know we'd have to call a special meeting. I'd like to go out there, I'd like to hear what those people say about relocating it out there. So I think we need to slow it down a little bit more. We have made some progress on this, and we have some recommendations. We have three recommendations, okay? And I'm gonna keep my, I'm gonna keep my comments till the meeting, but I think we need to, we need to put this on a workshop, that that's all that's on there. That's it. So if it's a third Tuesday workshop, that would be my recommendation. So, so we can have some comment on it. Now, I know...
All right, let, we're gonna keep, we are gonna keep this meeting in order, ladies and gentlemen. I'll sit here and listen to you on public comment as long as you like. It's coming up shortly. We purposely put the public comment after this, where you could come up and speak to us. So anyhow...
That's my suggestion, because I think, I agree with Commissioner Harvey, and I'd like to go there. And I think we need to have a third Tuesday workshop on this to, to try to make that decision on that date.
What do we have at this time? What do we have scheduled? Or do we have any idea what we have scheduled at the 10th workshop?
No, sir, that is your next general workshop for the Board of County Commissioners. We don't have the agenda out for that yet, but we'll do whatever is recommended by the board, if you want to have it on the 10th, or if you want to have it on your traditional Tuesday, we can do that.
Okay. Are you through, Mr. Pickens? Commissioner Pickens? Okay. Before we move into public comment, Julienne, I think I'm going to, I'm going to go into public comment because of this, and we'll get to you after, your presentation after public comment, which is an update on the countywide projects, unless the Commissioners would like to hear it before. That suit everybody if we just move her to after public comment? Okay, before we move into public comment, I'd just like to say that first and foremost, I'd like to express my gratitude to the people that served on the committee to, and gave their time voluntarily to do so. It wasn't an easy task for anybody there. The committee was tasked with exactly what they came up with, locations to be recommended back to the Board of County Commissioners. I think I have to agree, and I'm gonna say it before public comment, and I think I have to agree with Commissioner Pickens and Harvey, that it, that it needs to, they need to be able to go meet with the constituency in Melrose, if that's what Commissioner Harvey wants to do. And we'll take it to the, to a future workshop, which will either be the 10th or a special workshop on the third Tuesday. We used to do that whenever we had contentious items. So with that being said, I'm going to open for public comment. At this time, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of this agenda. Please limit to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting or now to the deputy clerk. Debbie, over here on my left, you're right. And just before we get started and I start calling names, I just, or calling names to be, to come up and speak, I didn't ask for a disposition on this before public comment, where y'all would have the opportunity to come up and speak before the commission decided to do something today, or what that decision was gonna be. So I didn't want you to think that your comments would go in vain one way or the other. So with that being said, the first person that I'm gonna ask to come forward is Latoya Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The relocation of the statue is a compromise many seem not to understand.
That sounds still not right.
Jacob, can you try to turn out the podium microphone up a little more?
Yep, I've turned it up now.
Testing. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The relocation of the statue is a compromise many seem to not understand. I remember one of the commissioners saying, "Tavell and Darnisha should have approached them first before doing a protest." Well, a protest was warranted, because no one should have to tell you that a Confederate statue is a... to tell you that a Confederate statue is offensive to the black community. That's something that the leaders should have taken the initiative to address. No action from the leaders of Putnam County means you didn't see the need to address it. Therefore, a protest was planned to bring it to your attention. Commissioner Turner appeared nervous in a previous meeting after the decision was made to relocate the statue. Do you know how many threats my son, Tavell, and Darnisha received? If I told you, you wouldn't believe it. However, with all the threats that was brought to our attention, they stayed the course and continued to make the community aware of how the statue affects the black community. Yes, the statue is in honor of those who fought in the war, as well as it is a symbol of a war that wanted to maintain the institution of slavery. My ancestors were slaves, just as the Patriots and others are fighting to keep the statue at the courthouse or visible in plain sight. Tavell, Darnisha, myself, and many others will fight as hard for our ancestors. I don't see what the issue is in relocating the statue at, to a designated location, for those who wish to honor it can still proceed to honor it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Robinson. Um, next is, um, Lysiel McAllister. Is that it?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. How are you?
Good, well...
It's good to be with you this morning. I'm speaking on behalf... I'm speaking on behalf of Gail Jesse, President of the Ladies Memorial Association. She extends greetings to you, and regrets that she could not be with you here personally today. Um, but asked me to read a few brief remarks, which I believe the clerk will hand also to you. Commissioners, raise statement on Confederate soldiers' memorials. In the immediate aftermath of the Great War of 1861 to 65, the U.S. Congress initiated retirement campaigns that established national cemeteries to provide and catalog the final resting places of the remains of U.S. soldiers. However, the U.S. War Department initially ignored the Confederate, uh, U.S. soldiers. Therefore, the Ladies Memorial Associations began immediately forming across the South to resolve this issue by becoming the surrogate for the financially devastated state governments like Florida. The driving force behind the LMAs was to correct this neglect of Southern soldiers who fell to, in the service of their states by establishing cemeteries for their interment. After the re-terment process was complete, the next step was to erect cenotaphs, or empty tombs, to properly honor the fallen who lay in faraway or unknown graves where their remains were known only to God. Just when your aftermath epimatics, the LMA began planning to erect several memorials in Florida. Motivated by grief from the loss of husbands, sons, brothers, fathers, uncles, betrothed, and friends, the ladies worked tirelessly to complete the objective of erecting permanent memorials to the Southern war dead. These memorials have stood, in some cases, for almost 150 years, even surviving the passage of time and Florida hurricanes. However, today, these memorials are now threatened by forces seeking to eliminate them from our municipal landscapes. Sadly, these same forces are working hard to wipe all memory of Southern soldiers who sacrificed their lives for their families and homes from the annals of American history. Another group, the United Daughters of Confederacy, established in the 1890s, picked up the work where the LMAs left off. The UDC sought to ensure that every community where Southern soldiers served, that a memorial would be erected in remembrance of their sacrifice. Putnam County is the recipient of one of these memorials, and for the above reasons, the LMA requests that the Putnam County Historic Cenotaph remains where it was erected. Thank you for consideration. Gail R. Jesse, President, Ladies Memorial Association. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, um, Bob Kerwin?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members, uh, other commissioners and friends. Uh, I wish to say a few words on behalf of the Civil War monument remaining on the courthouse grounds for now. Uh, Webster's College Dictionary defines the word "respect" as "to feel or to show honor, or esteem, or in other words, to hold in high regard." The voters of Putnam County elected you, and they showed their respect by doing so. You didn't demand it, you earned it. All of the memorials on the courthouse grounds were put there by fraternal organizations and residents and friends of Putnam County to show their honor and esteem to those who served and died in the conflicts. The monument in question was not there, but was not put there by government, and should not be removed by government. Commissioner Jeff Rawls...
Please, please.
Commissioner Jeff Rawls was the only one that got it right. It needs to be put on the petition for the voters to vote on. Then you wouldn't have to worry about running all over the county and looking for things, because the voters would make the decision for you, like it should be. And by showing, and by showing your respect, uh, where it should go, the voters, the voters should decide. So you, so you waited too long to get it on this ballot. You got two years to get it right. The memorial has been there for almost 100 years. What's two more years? Please, let the voters make the decision. In closing, I would like to say, anyone viewing that memorial and passing by, if you feel a sense of bigotry, hatred, or racism, you need to seek professional help. Let's, let's move on, let's move on from something that happened 155 years ago. I think we're all above that. And Commissioners, I've got one more thing. Please, don't be pushed into something by a group of left-wing activists and a couple of college students looking for respect, because they won't find it there. The voters, the voters...
Please, everybody, please.
...deserve the respect on this issue, and actions have consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, Mr. Stu Butler?
Good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Steve Butler. Uh, I'm just going to keep it short. Uh, I worked for the county for six years, maintaining the courthouse lawn and, uh, surrounding properties. Um, the whole six years I've worked there, nobody has ever, ever came up to me and said, "You know, I think this statue should be removed." This is a political, this is political, it's all political. Um, I mean, if you're going to start removing things, there's a lot in this county that should be removed. But to just concentrate on one thing that I maintained in this courthouse lawn, and to remove it, is plainly ridiculous. So, you know, I just wanted to keep it short. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Next, Gail Esperson?
Good morning. My name is Gail Esperson. I live in East Palaca. And, um, I have a, just a, I've been following this very closely. I've sent emails to all of you. Um, thank you, Mr. Pickens, for recognizing that the vote was already made to move the statue. Um, and when I was in the, uh, the committee meeting, the, the first one, watching it, I noticed that there were three people who voted against having the statue stay put. And it's significant to me that those three people were the three black women on the committee. I just want you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esperson. Um, next, Judy Lucia?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The Confederate statue means so much to the majority of Putnam County and surrounding counties. It is not about slavery, but the monument of dead soldiers who served in the war. It never bothered anyone except for BLM, Tevel Adams, Darnisha Leonard, Latoya Robinson, and Mayor Hill. Tevel said that if he didn't win his cause for the removal of the statue, he would bring in his influential people. Darnisha stated that the removal of the statue would only be the beginning of more to come. Heck, they didn't even stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will not be intimidated by Black Lives Matters. President Trump has an executive order for, to protect our statue. The courthouse is the only safe place for it to be. We will protect it. May God bless America, and please reconsider having the statue stay where it's at.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Seber Newsom III. Did I, am I saying it wrong? Seber Newsom? You'll have to give it to that lady right there.
Excuse me. Hello, my name is Seber Newsom III. You know, I came here in 2015, before all this started, and I tried to get you to pass an ordinance to protect all of your monuments for the old county courthouse. And at the time, I said, "Oh, we don't have that problem here." Well, now you do, don't you? You know, I, I'm not going to talk about the history of it, what it means to some people, what it means to other people. But I have a solution, another option. Keep it there, and contact, well, I showed you a picture there, Palaca Memorial Services. They did a monument that's six feet, eight inches high. You can see the picture of it. This is what it looks like.
Mr. Newsom, you need to address the board, please.
Sir.
Thank you.
Why don't you put up another memorial on the courthouse grounds, maybe closer to the steps of the courthouse, to either honor the slaves from Putnam County, because there were a lot, or to honor the Black Union soldiers, or both. For what it will cost to move the Confederate memorial, you can do these two easily. Thirty thousand dollars, it looks like you could do two of them, from what this man told me, Glenn East, at Palaca Memorial Services. And it looks like it's a beautiful monument. You can have engraving on it, whatever you want. That's another option. You said it costs two and a half, almost a quarter million dollars to move that, and that's, that's right, because it costs $200,000 to move the one in St. Augustine, out to Trout Creek. So that's another option. Put up more memorials. Don't take them down. Let's honor everybody. Everybody, include everybody's history in this. Why offend one group and take something down when you can put up more to honor more people? Isn't that the logical thing to do? And I don't understand why you won't put it on the ballot. That, that escapes me completely. I don't understand that at all. Well, I, I do understand it, but that's besides the point. But this is another option for you. Start a GoFundMe page. I will donate to that, uh, putting up more, more memorials. And I know a lot of people that will do that. That will even save you more money. People will donate to put up these memorials to the, either the black Union soldiers who fought, there were some from Palaca, or to honor the slaves from Palaca, Putnam County. Let's do that. Doesn't that make sense? I think both sides can agree with that. Put up more memorials to honor everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, Lorraine Carr. Lorraine, I think you got some ways to go, Jacob, on your new, um, mic service you put in.
Good morning, Lorraine Carr Satsuma. Um, I served on the relocation committee, and it was an experience. I can't say that I was totally happy with the decisions other than to leave the monument where it is. Um, because Melrose, you got three, four counties right there at that place, and it's out of sight, out of mind. No telling us what's going to happen to it. And same thing in, uh, Veterans Park, out of sight, out of mind. It's going to be destroyed as soon as it is moved. That's what happened to the one in St. Augustine. It wasn't even off the truck yet, and, uh, it was vandalized. So I would like to, for y'all, to reconsider your vote and to leave the monument where it is. And I do like the idea Mr. Newsman had about putting up another monument to honor the slaves or the Black Union soldiers, because the ladies, the Daughters of Confederacy that put the monument up, they did not do it to hurt anybody. It was put up for our Putnam County soldiers, our guys in our county. All, y'all probably have ancestors that were there, or fought in the war. So it's part of your heritage, too. So why do we have to take it down? They, you know, we have the history of everything about how they helped people in town and all. So you know that they did not do it out of spite or anything like that, because we have the history of it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Uh, next is Paul Miracle.
Hello, testing. Can you hear me?
Yeah, pull it up a little closer to you, Paul. There you go.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, good, thank you.
All right. First off, I want to say with the death threats, there's not one person I don't know in the patriotic community that has not gotten to over hundreds of death threats through the BLM. It's on a regular basis on both sides. And the reasoning why is because we have created division among this thing. One question is to Pickens and Harvey, if y'all wanted to go check out the Melrose spot, you've had two weeks. Why haven't you done it? You know? And then for you, Turner, I would say, you're saying you're...
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Turner, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Turner, Commissioner, um, like, if y'all, like, if you were listening to the people and you wanted the people to be said, why didn't you allow it to be on the ballot, which we're right here in December right now? It would be literally being almost voted on in what, a week? So, and then y'all are still trying to push it off, like Rawls keeps saying, or Mr. Rawls keeps saying.
Thank you.
You know, it's still being pushed off. So what's to say that after this election is over, that you're not going to turn and turn on us again when you first turned on us, when you said that you were going to put it on the ballot where it should have been? And I guess that's it.
Hey, thank you for coming. Uh, the next is David Wade.
Good morning, board members. I'm David Wade. I spent nearly 72 years of my life here in Putnam County, along with my family, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren. I'm a member of the committee, or was a member of that committee. But I've got a problem. And that problem is, is I just received the minutes of the board meeting on the October 15th, and they're not approved. And I've got a problem with that, because there's an issue on, uh, Article 7, Paragraph 3. And that issue is... It seems as though the wants of a few are, are targeted by lobbying to committee members, uh, who were at ease at home, and, uh, destroyed the effective nature of the approval of the committee, and took away from the majority, a voice of the people. approval of the committee, and took away from the majority of voice of the people in this issue, not even being present.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you be a little more specific which board meeting you're talking about, because I'm completely confused.
I'm talking about the board meeting.
He's talking about his committee meeting.
Committee meeting on the 15th. I'm a member of that committee.
Okay, the 15th.
But that, those minutes were not approved. I just received my copy of the minutes in yesterday's mail. Therefore, I couldn't recognize the problem until I read it. And I cited Article 7, Paragraph 3. Lobbied to the committee members, a certain group of committee members, by a certain group of outside few people, the Theobald family, to be quite exact, took away and distracted the committee, and thus, the two, if you will, former positions were rendered moot and took off of the three, three that we were supposed to come up with. They were Triangle Park slash Theobald Park. And out behind me there, about 200 yards, is the sign where it was proposed that it would go also. With one swift movement by several of the board members, they were rendered moot and taken out of the stack of three. And other, other parts were put in their place, parts that I didn't like. I voted against it, I think one other person did too. And, but one, we were one member short. He didn't come in until after that voting took place. I suggest that y'all, if you haven't read the meeting, minutes of that meeting, I've got a copy of it here, and I'm sure Mr. Troy Anna does, but they're unapproved. And therefore, I rendered that section of that meeting moot and revert back to the two spots, which were Triangle Park and the Business Center right out back for its location, along with leaving it alone. And, you know, because I can't understand-
Dave, you about to get there, your three minutes are up. You hear the buzzer?
I thought it was just my hearing aid. But I can't understand why we allowed this to happen. We were one member short of having, having enough to maybe do something, but his not being there certainly was a discussion that was relevant to their location. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir, for coming today.
And this is no reflection on Mr. Troy Anna. I think it may be oversight.
Rich, I have a quick question for you. On a committee that's now been disbanded, who approves the minutes of the last meeting?
They can just come on the consent agenda. It's just to show that they took place, not any sort of comment. They'll come before the commission, just to confirm that they took place.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ms. Sheila Beck. Morning.
All of you know me. I'm Sheila Beck. I run Stand Your Ground, Putnam County. I've given a couple of you a hard time. I want to address one thing before. Ms. Latoya had said, do y'all know how many death threats or threats that her son has had? As you all know, I was at both of those meetings. I spoke out, I gave my name, I had to give my address. Since then, I have had pictures stolen off my Facebook, I have been threatened, people are posting them, making threats against me and my disabled husband, who has not even attended one rally. Not one. Y'all ask this committee to do something. Mr. Turner, you reserved the right to change your mind, and we are here to ask you to exercise that right. The power is in your hands.
Let's keep it civil.
The power's in your hands. I'm sorry that it's laying in your lap, but you are in control of this. You can make this decision. No, it does not have to go to a workshop. Y'all had your workshop, y'all voted, it went to the committee. There's no reason to go back to workshop. Y'all know what the, what the choices were. There's just no reason. There's no reason to keep putting it off. The only thing that it's going to do? I don't know. It's going to hurt someone's election, I know that, because people are waiting. People are waiting to see y'all's hands. It's time you show them. It's time you stand up like Mr. Rawls and show them you have a backbone, that you're not going to be bribed, you're not going to be paid off, none of that. Mr. Harvey, I'm going to direct this to you, since you did respond to one of my emails. I found it kind of descending, arrogant, and I really don't think that you should be in the position that you're in. We can do whatever we have to do, just like she said, Latoya said, that they're going to keep fighting. Hmm, we got a whole lot of fight in us. We're out there every week. Every week, we're out there. Every week. I have sent you, Mr. Turner, email after email of people that want this done, we want it over. Decide either way. Either way. You reserve that right. I'm asking you, on behalf of the group that we run, exercise your right. Exercise your right. And I'm going to be upfront with everybody, this is the only thing that's going to save you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Next, I'm going to ask Ms. Cynthia Asia to come up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I was not planning on coming up. I am a member of the committee, not the board. I'm a member of the committee. And I was born and raised in Putnam County. So I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, and a retired 35-year educator from the school level to the district level. And I just wanted to say that, to me, this is an opportunity, and I think I said it as my closing remark when, at the last committee meeting, this is an opportunity to bring unity to Putnam County. This is not just Palatka, this is Putnam County. And I think that, as a taxpayer, I have just as much right as anyone else, but I think it's time for us to begin a healing process, no matter what the decision is, because it is your decision, but we do need to come to a point where we can begin to heal. And going back and forth, as far as some of the comments are concerned, my thing is, I have a right, just as any other person, but also, we're in the, our country needs healing. We need to begin the process. And I think that the five of you can make that decision, and I'm just honored to have been on the committee to listen to some of the opinions of others. But I just wanted to get up and say that, because my thing is, we need to heal. I've been through many, many protests in Putnam County. Years ago, this protest just hadn't started now. I've been here the whole time. And so I do know that it's never been positive like some people think always. There have been some ups and downs, and we're still fighting the same battles that I fought back in the 60s. That's sad to me. But I think that we have an opportunity here in Putnam County to begin the healing process. So thank you for letting me be on the committee, but also be here today just to hear the comments. And I do look to see some healing beginning in Putnam County. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Asia. Rodney Williams.
Well, I wasn't going to speak this morning, but somebody talked me into it. First thing I want to say is I want to send prayers and well wishes to all the police officers that were injured in Philadelphia last night in the so-called peaceful protests. There was 30 of them. One of them ran over. So that was the first thing I want to say. The other thing is, I think that this thing about the statue is kind of a waste of time for y'all, us. I think it'd be more important to worry about funding the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the Fire Rescue. You know, you're taking up time and taxpayer money. I'm a veteran, and I've had my run-ins with the law. I'm not proud of it, but I've changed. I've been in Putnam County for about 20 years, a little over now, and my brother ran for share four times. Most of y'all know him. We're different, but we love each other. And just like, I think most Americans love all Americans, it don't matter what color, creed, nationality, whatever, because I know I do. And I'm not that good of a public speaker, as you can tell, but like I said, I think that there's a lot more things to worry about, because if you don't learn about the past, you're prone to repeat it, and that's exactly what's going on right now. Socialists in this country is just, and I feel bad for the people that were educated after the 70s, because they were never taught anything about socialism, the reason for this flag, why we fought in wars to protect, to give everybody the right to do what we're doing right now. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, I'm going to ask Nicole Rathery.
Ratkovic.
Ratcliffe.
Ratkovic.
Okay. Okay, would you give us your name and address for the record, please? Where it's on the record.
Good morning. My name is Nicole Lee Ratkovic, and I live at 330-1 Sleepy Hollow Drive, Interlochen. And I was born and raised in St. Augustine, Florida. I've lived in Putnam County for eight years now, and it's the most beautiful county, I think, in Florida. I think Florida's the most beautiful state, but I think that the South is the most beautiful part of this whole entire planet, and that the reason it is and is able to be so, the way it is, is because of the people who fought for it. And they protected their homes, and they protected their lands, and it had much more to do with their home and their families than it did with any specific institution. And I am so proud of my Southern heritage. My grandmother grew up with her family planting cotton and picking cotton. She planted corn, she picked corn, she planted beans, she picked beans. They're sharecroppers. She would buy, her family would buy her shoes, brand-new shoes, for picking, when the seasons start, I mean, sorry, for planting, when the season started, and for all the way up to picking the crops. And then school started after the crops were harvested, and she had to go to school in those same shoes. And they weren't new shoes. And so I'm just really proud of her and of all of the community that I live in and their ancestors for doing what they did and protecting their families and their lands, because they were hard-working people. They didn't have, 99% of the South planted their food and harvested their food themselves. They're, what I like to call, what many people like to call, hard-working dirt farmers. And that's what the South is, and that's what we were fighting for, was for our land and for our homes. And sometimes it still feels like, you know, we're doing that. And I'm just really proud of my ancestors and would like to see our heritage protected and maintained. And if others have heritage they want to put on display, then, you know, groups can be formed and money can be raised for that, just like this statue was put up by a specific group outside of the government. So I'd, I'd like to see it where it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming today. David McAllister.
My name is David McAllister. I'm an officer of the Florida Division of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, and I'm here to correct any misunderstandings there may be about the official position of the Sons of Confederate Veterans. Our national policy is that civic authorities, national and state and local, all should leave all veterans' memorials to all wars, all veterans of all wars' memorials, as they are and where they are. All veterans deserve respect. The way that we treat the veterans of 150 years ago will be the way that the veterans of today will be treated 150 years from now. Personally, I'd like to ask you to reconsider the vote to remove the monument and allow a vote of the people of the community on this issue. This has been done in other counties in Florida. I guarantee you, money for removal will come from outside your community, and certainly agitation for removal will come from outside your community. You don't want people just to buy what they want from you, do you? The monument was paid for by the ladies of the community 100 years ago, but really, the price was paid by the veterans from this community, well, 100, 150 years ago, who served when their farms and families were threatened and their state called them to service. I was here a month ago when Mr. H.K. Edgerton, who was a past president of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People in Asheville, North Carolina, spoke here. He's a black, Southern civil rights activist, and he spoke to over 250 citizens at the courthouse to urge them to keep their local monument. Mr. Edgerton says that many in the black community identify as Southerners and want to maintain our shared Southern identity. Sometimes they're afraid to speak up. Martin Luther King wasn't afraid. He dreamed of a table of brotherhood, and you cannot build a table of brotherhood when the civic landscape that we share, representing the history and honorable service of our ancestors, is removed. Keep the Confederate monument. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Sue Holland.
Thank you for the three minutes. I just wanted to point out that I'm not a native of Florida. I'm originally from New York. Thanks for letting me be here. I served in the Navy. My husband served 20 years in the Navy. My family served in the Army. And I think what everybody's forgetting is that statue represents a military soldier fighting for America. We are all free here in America, and I think that's what people are forgetting. It just represents history. Without history, we repeat the mistakes of the past. Keep the history. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Ed Killerbrew.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ed Killerbrew. I reside at 146 Bardin Estate Circle. Believe it or not, I wasn't going to try to spay anything this morning. I was just happy to be back in the house to watch you guys perform government. But with that being said, as I've said from this podium many times before, I'm a seventh-generation Putnam Countyan. I'm proud of where I'm from. I've lived here all my life. I've worked to help my children to be able to stay here in Putnam County and all these people in this audience, their children, to stay here in Putnam County, just as y'all have, to learn, to, I mean, you know, to be educated and work through high school, college, and now, I mean, now I'm proud. We've got a four-year educational system here in Putnam County that our kids can stay here and be educated, our children. I mean, everyone sitting on this board can remember when there wasn't such a thing here in Putnam County. We had a two-year community college, a junior college. All those things that are, where we have progressed, moved forward, and we continue to move forward, try to move forward as a community, listening to other people's opinions and ideas. If you'll remember, when this thing started, I stood up and I said, "We need to have a compromise somewhere along this line." The compromise that I see that can happen is move the statue, but put it on the court, leave it on the square, leave it on the courthouse square, put it to the side. I have an uncle that's down there on the World War II monument, okay? I mean, again, I've got vested interest here. Leave it on the square, but in its place, put something that says, "Today, we as citizens of Putnam County have decided to move forward from any kind of hatred, any kind of thing like that that's going to bother us, white, black, yellow, indifferent, gay." I mean, I, you know, right now, we put a statue right there that says, "I love Putnam County, and this is what, from this day forward, we're going to move away from all that stuff." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
My name is Patricia Moore High, and I live at 330 Sleepy Hollow Drive in Interlochen. My name's Patricia Moore High, and I live at 330-1 Sleepy Hollow Drive in Interlochen. The Moore in my name is my grandmother's middle name. Branch High was my great-great-grandfather, and he was a Colonel in the Civil War for the Seventh Infantry. He mainly protected farms and local communities from attacks from vagabonds and northern raiders coming into our area. He did go to Gettysburg, but they got there late and were in the supply line part of the war and never actually fought. My great-great-grandfather, Simon Haney, was a Colonel in the Seventh Infantry, and only protected local farms from vagabonds and northern raiders. He was drug out of his house, shot seven times in front of his wife and children, his eight children, which, one of which was my great-great-grandfather, Simon Hires, Jr. He lived to be a hundred and four, and I had the opportunity to sit on his knee when I was a child, and at Thanksgiving, he would stand up in front of us and tell us about the Civil War and being raised in it. He was born in eighteen fifty-nine. He told us it was a horrible situation, they almost starved, and that we should never do it again, and that I would not like to see my great-grandfather and my great-great-grandfather's history thrown on the back of a truck and destroyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today. Next is Mary Reese. Mary, oh, there you are.
I had not planned on speaking today, and so I was trying to get my thoughts together, and I didn't have much time. One thing I've learned over my lifetime is that veterans have a different perspective on freedom and what that means and what that stands for. My husband was a Vietnam Vet. He died from the effects of Agent Orange. He did not speak about the war very much, even if you asked him. He kept that kind of sequestered back in his mind, but they did have a respect for each other. Veteran of any war, if you can remember, and you're old enough to remember, when the Vietnam veterans came back, our country was very nasty to them, spit on them, called them names. I've done a lot of research on this statue and the, what it came from Putnam County because that's how we have to look at it, is the lens of Putnam County. And I found this little article about the return of the Florida battle flag by Union Officer. It said the flag, torn and shot and shelled, stained with the blood of soldiers of both North and South, was formally presented by Colonel Alcorn, Toledo, Ohio, blah, 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 blah. And he said, "Florida need feel no shame in the loss of the battle banner at Franklin. It was taken behind our own intrenchments, and it took a courageous group of fighting men to ever get there. You had us licked at Franklin, but fortunately for us, your command apparently failed to realize at the crucial moment just how completely you had us encompassed. Turning then to the torn flag, the aged federal veteran reverently said, 'The flag itself has been taken within our lines, behind our own breastworks. We have prized its possession highly. Tonight, however, our pleasure in returning it to the men whose courage we had cause to admire and incidentally were forced to respect is greater than our pride in its possession.'" The flag was then delivered to Governor John Martin in Tallahassee for safekeeping. The thought struck me that if opposing men who fought on opposing sides in a war had that much respect for each other, that certainly we should have that respect for the veterans of a war that perhaps we can't even understand or have any lens of understanding, too. I hope that we can come together as a community, serving on the committee. I appreciate that honor. Listening to others' perspective has certainly been an eye-opener. We do need to come together, as Ms. Asia said, and begin healing, but I don't think that removing the statue would help in that process. And so, I stand with history and ask that it remain in place, and you can do a revote, I think.
Okay, thank you. Next, for public comment, is Tim Hutelling. Wake up, Tim. You're going to have to come up here, Tim. I can't.
This is about concerning port authority?
Public comment right now. I understand that we're not in the port, that we've already passed the port authority, but I saw you late, so I'll let you speak on your island. Come on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Hutelling, I, when Josh Gabotan, our federal lobbyist, was here this morning.
Yes, sir.
And you hadn't gotten here yet, I brought up the email that you sent to me about taking that dredge material.
Yes, sir.
If we can get that award and putting it over on the island. He wrote down notes, so I can't.
Possibly.
Possibly, and I appreciated it, and I put it on the record this morning for that to be done.
Very good.
And he also commented that it wasn't the first time that's been done before, so he didn't think there would be a big issue. We'll see.
Cool, because for those that don't know, Buzzard Island is in the middle of the Saint, well, off to the side in the Saint John's River, and it's been here since the sailing days. And it's, when I first got here five years ago, there were all kinds of cypress trees, and it was just covered with the white birds that are Florida, that all the tourists come to see, that eat all kinds of bugs on the farmer's fields every day. I talk about them going to, going off to work in the morning. I counted in forty-five minutes, two thousand five hundred and some birds departed that island a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and it's trying to wash away into the Saint John's River. It belongs to the state of Florida. It belongs to the public, and there isn't a single cotton-picking person picking a finger up to take responsibility for that land. They spent twenty-five years trying to get that piece, the Florida DEP, trying to get that thing, and it was finally converted from the federal government to the state of Florida, and all they did was throw it in the vault and ignore it. Larry Harvey was kind enough to author a letter three, four years ago now. He says, "It shouldn't be a big lift." What the heck? And, I mean, there's books that are written on how to stabilize the soil so that you don't have this massive erosion and save these, it's really specific habitat that's ignored, and it's really a big deal. And as one of the avian bird guys that I talked to, a really neat guy, says, "It's a lot cheaper to save what we have now than to have to build it." And he wrote a document on how to create a artificial bird island, and I'm glad. Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Mr. Harvey. So, anyhow.
Thank you for coming this morning, Mr. Hutelling. Is there any more blue cards, Debbie, at this time? Okay, if there's no more blue cards, I'm going to close public comment, and at this time, I'm going to ask the, what is the will of the board on?
Can we get Julianne's presentation and then take a break, maybe?
Sure, yeah. Okay, it's been requested that we go ahead and get the presentation from General Services on county-wide projects and then take a recess. Ms. Young, you do not look like Ms. Young.
I'm not Ms. Young.
Paul, I have more here if you need some.
I've got plenty, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here for your October project updates. As a reminder, this is not an all-inclusive list of county projects. This is a snippet of county projects that are of most concern to our administration, commission, and/or citizens. With that, we'll begin. Administration has the Strategic Plan Project that's coming to a close. The report from the two-day planning workshop was disseminated. The mission, vision, and value statement has been established. Employee survey results were disseminated and reviewed. The strategic operational plans and goal metrics have been reviewed by the consultant, and the fourteen priority objectives identified by the board have been assigned to team leads and have been operationalized to develop actionable metrics. The final version of the strategic plan is expected to be sent to the VOCC during November. The administration has the CARES Act Business Assistance Program. The VOCC approved a business assistance program on Friday, July 24th. Online applications went live on August 10th, and as of yesterday, we had three hundred and sixteen eligible applicants and two hundred and fifteen-six in a missing documents or in review status. Of the three hundred and sixteen eligible applicants, two hundred and thirty-three have been sent to finance for payment. Administration has the CARES Act Nonprofit Assistance Program. The VOCC approved the nonprofit assistance program on Friday, September 8th. The online applications went live on September 18th, and as of yesterday, we had fifty-two eligible applicants and eighteen in review or in missing documents status. Of the fifty-two eligible applicants, twenty-five have been sent to finance for payment. Administration has the CARES Act Individual Assistance Program. The VOCC approved an individual assistance program on Tuesday, September 29th. Online applications went live on Friday, October 22nd, and as of yesterday, we had three hundred and seventy-four completed applications and one thousand one hundred and seventeen applications in process. The Animal Control Facility, the OCC, has discussed the conceptual floor plan in a June workshop. Revisions were requested and have been completed. Ms. Suarez presented the completed draft conceptual kennel plan, or is expected to, at the November Animal Advisory Committee. The cat area has been approved, and Public Works has most recently completed the topographical survey requested of the area. The Department of Health has an interior building renovation project. A ward of bid 2022 is made at the October 13th VOCC meeting. Contract documents are being assembled, and a notice to proceed is expected in November of 2020. Construction is expected to be complete in May of 2021. The Melrose Library Expansion Project has a bid 2028, which was released September 24th. Bids were due October 21st, and we expect to bring an agenda item for formal award to the November 10th VOCC meeting. Construction is expected to take two hundred and forty calendar days, with an estimated completion date of July of 2021. The Parks and Recreation Department has the Flora Home Park Historic Building Project underway with the Flora Home Historic Association. Volunteers continue to work under the direction of the building contractor, Mike Conroy. The project remains in the demolition phase. Interior demolition of both structures has been completed. Some building materials were salvaged, and the floor system repaired in the main building is also complete. Work begins on the floor system in the smaller building next. Their fundraising efforts are going well. They've received a hundred and thirty-five local donations and recently auctioned six donated gift baskets and also held a successful barbecue fundraiser. They are proud to announce that Vulcan Materials has given them a $10,000 gift and have committed to supporting the project in 2021. In addition, they've received word that the Weyheiser Grant was recommended for approval. The first week in November, they will meet with the architect and the builder to finalize their restoration plans and prepare for the building permit. Planning and zoning has the Comprehensive Plan Update underway. The Planning Commission is finishing up the review and update of the Comprehensive Plan. All goals and policies have been reviewed and updated as needed. Suggestions for changes to the future land use map have also been reviewed. It is the intent of the Planning Commission to provide a draft of those changes, goals, objectives, and policies, as well as the future land use map, to the VOCC in November of 2020. The Planning Department also has the Citizen Serve online permitting process going. The contract for services was executed, and they are still in implementation phase. Internal and external teams meet weekly to review and complete implementation of modules. They are currently implementing planning and zoning modules, and IT is working with Citizen Serve for the data transfer. Public Works has the Main Street Sidewalk Construction Project in Crescent City. Proud to announce that construction is complete and the punch list items are being reviewed. Public Works has the Fort Gate Ferry Landing Project, which is being led by Travis Roberts. FDOP permit has been successfully revised. The Army Corps of Engineers permit revision is still pending, and the pile-load calculations needed for FDOT were turned in. However, FDOT had comments that must be addressed and revisions required by follow FDOT review for concurrence. Public Works has the Bardin Bridge Project. The design is complete. Plans were submitted to FDOT, and FDO concurrence was given on September 21st. Bid 2101 was issued, and bids are due on November 2nd. Construction is anticipated to break down, break ground in December of 2020. Public Works has Lake Susan Road Phase Two Project. FDOT has approved the final plans. Concurrence has been obtained. Bid documents are being prepared by Public Works for advertisement. Construction is still scheduled to begin in December, and the project completion estimated date of June 2022. Public Works has the Saint John's Avenue resurfacing, Palm Avenue to CSX Crossing, the Palacca Fire Station. Ninety percent plans scheduled to be submitted to Public Works on October 28th for review. Construction schedule is still scheduled to begin in January of 2021, and project completion estimated date of July of 2022. Public Works had the fiscal year 20 road resurfacing project. The construction and the project is officially complete. Public Works has the East Palacca Waste Water Treatment Plan Expansion. The expansion was completed, which involves installation of the lift station at Paradise Point, the septic-to-sewer individual tie-ins, horse landing, and Elsie Drive are underway. The tie-ins are scheduled to be complete in October, and the punch list items are being addressed, scheduled to be fully completed by November 13th. Public Works has the County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Notice to proceed for a crunch bench system was issued to Civil Services Design, scheduled to be completed in March 26, 2021. Public Works has the septic-to-sewer conversion. The governing board has formally approved the 1.275 million in grant funding for the project. Design is underway, and we're scheduled to advertise for construction in December of 2020. Public Works Dirt to Pave 2020. Bids obtained and recommendation for award to three different contractors is expected to be presented today. Construction schedule- Construction schedule contingent upon approval will begin November 10th and estimated to be completed by July. Public Works has the East Putnam Drainage Flooded, Flood, East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Mitigation. Sorry, guys. Bid package is in process. Serving, services were procured for TCE requirements on state-owned properties. TCE schedules to be submitted to the Board of Trustees and the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the State of Florida by December 15, 2024 approval. 70% of the TCEs have been obtained. Public Works has the St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvements, State Road 19 to County Road 309C. The design is underway. 90% review scheduled for November 19, 2020. We plan to advertise for construction in December of 2020. Public Works has the St. John's Avenue Bike Trail. The Gopher Tortoise Regal Location Services has been completed. Plans modifications requested by FDOT scheduled to be completed by the end of October, and construction scheduled to begin in November of 2020. The Road Restriping and Pavement Marking Project for fiscal year 20 was awarded to P&amp;P Stripping. The project is scheduled to begin November 10, 2020. East Lar Lane Drainage Project, the Crescent Lake Shores Drive, the contract was awarded to DB Civil Construction LLC. Pre-construction conference was conducted on October 23rd, and construction is scheduled to begin in November of 2020. The Toll's Road Drainage Project, notice to reject all bids was issued in October 26. Plan modifications complete to bring the project within budget have been sent to FDOT. They are currently reviewing the modified plans for concurrence. Reclaiming Main Street and Interlochen was awarded to Anderson Columbia Construction. Anderson Columbia informed that plans would be starting October 28th and should be finished by November 2nd. Sanitation is still working through the Cell 4A construction expansion. The communications with DEP are ongoing, and we still expect the construction to be ready sometime in late 2020, and then it will take six months to complete.
Okay, I had one question. On the 310 Bridge.
Yes.
This with CSI, I think it was.
Yes.
You said that 2021 was going to be when the project was complete, or is that the engineering?
That's for design services.
Design services, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions or general services on projects going on right now?
If I can get a copy of that.
It's in your email.
Survey?
Oh, yeah. I can send that over to you.
Yeah, survey with the topo and the boundary, please.
Okay. We'll have that in your email box.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else?
PDF, by the way. Don't, don't give it to me hard.
Of the survey?
Yeah, PDF it, please. That's it.
Public Works did that for us, so I'm sure they can assist.
About it, okay. Thank you, Ms. Young, for that. Do you want a recess now, Commissioner Harvey? Okay, we're going to take a 15-minute recess.
Let's try to get the meeting called back to order here. I guess we need to decide what we're gonna do. Commissioner Harvey, did you have any further comments at this time?
I don't, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
No.
Commissioner Harvey, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Rawls? Do you have any further comments?
I know, I know, we look a lot alike, but no. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and put this on the ballot for our next election cycle, to be decided by the citizens.
Have a motion, is there a second? Hearing none, motion died for lack of a second.
I would, I would, look, if I could...
Look, I can't have you removed. Please, please, just, let's keep this calm, okay? I understand passions run deep. Let the commissioners talk, and then we'll talk, okay? Commissioner Pickens?
I, you know, I, I know everybody wants a decision today. And, and this thing has been going on for a while, but, but we did make a decision to put a committee together to, after we made a decision. So the committee has come back with three recommendations, okay? And to this gentleman's point and his question, for us to have a meeting in Melrose, to listen to citizens there about it maybe being relocated there, unless Commissioner Harvey just goes by himself, you have to advertise that meeting properly, and you have to have minutes taken and things. It has to be an official, public, advertised meeting. So the two weeks, could we have done that? Yes, he probably could have done that, but that didn't happen. But I still think this needs some, some more conversation. We've heard from y'all, there's no question, from, you can say one side, and we've heard from some, I'll say, the other side. But this is one thing that probably does need to be talked about, is putting it on the ballot, okay? So I think, I think we truly need to have another workshop on this, to discuss this, and come up with the final decision on this. I don't think a few more weeks is gonna really hurt this. So that's my opinion of that, and to your point, Jeff, you've been consistent on that to put it on the ballot. I was the other way, because I felt that we were elected to make decisions of leadership, and I felt that this was a decision of leadership to make. So leaving it there is, is leaving it there, is that a compromise? I don't know. Moving it, is that a compromise? I don't know. This, I was afraid that what is happening would happen. That was my biggest concern, that this is, appears to have divided some of Putnam County citizens more than I guess they were before. So all I'm saying is, my opinion is, I think we need to move it to that workshop, and have it, and come up with a decision then.
Well...
Is my, is my opinion.
You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. I think I'll go next. David, David, please, please, David, I'm gonna keep this meeting in order as much as possible, please help me out, okay? David, thank you that we're not in your committee meeting today, so please help me out by keeping the meeting civil, okay? I appreciate it. You know, I've said numerous times in, in the recent weeks, that the decision made by the board was made in good faith, in an attempt to unify this community. It divided the community like nothing I've ever seen. Sheila, I think that we should take an opportunity to send this to workshop, and I'll tell you why, before you start freaking out on me. I think that there are some other options, some options that were brought up to start with, and those options that I asked for in the first meeting that we ever talked about was that we erected a statue or a memorial to Robert Jenkins, and leave, leave it where it is, but erect a memorial as a, as a compromise to both sides. Nobody, I don't care who you are, in your right mind, cannot say Robert Jenkins was not a true hero for Putnam County. We named a school after him, we named a post office in, in Inalockin after him. Nobody can tell me, or convince me, that that's not tr- correct. So this commissioner is not wanting to move it to a workshop, just to keep from moving it, or moving it, or whatever, that's not what I'm wanting to do. I want to move it to workshop, where we can discuss the other options that are still available. One of my opponents on the trail said, "We didn't talk enough to the other side, and this could have all been avoided." I don't know that that's true or not, but this gives time for a little more discussion with both sides, to see if that would, would be a compromise to erect an additional memorial, or whatever, to Mr. Jenkins, or whatever citizen that's a true hero of Putnam County would like to, would like to honor. So I do believe this needs to go to workshop, but not the reason that we need to kick the can down the road. I think we need to find a compromise in this community, that will try to heal this community, like Ms. Asia said a minute ago. If I was sitting here today, and I had, didn't have my commissioner hat on, I'd be sitting out there with, in the audience, listening with somebody. But my job as a commissioner is to keep the community safe, to keep the community calmed down as much as I can. Yeah, I stirred it up by doing this, but I'm telling you right now, I think there are some options that we can come up with, and, and that's, I'm gonna shut up and let other commissioners go on from there. But I do think it needs to go to workshop, where we can try to find some, some options that might heal this community, or move us in a favorable direction, instead of just making it worse, or dividing us even worse. Commissioner Goddard, I believe you are next.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in agreement. It needs to go to a separate workshop, its own workshop, nothing else to be discussed except for this. But I also got, you know, we've got to look at this compromise. If we had put it on the ballot, and I did a lot of thinking and praying on this, if we'd have put it on the ballot, it wouldn't have been over. It'd been, you might have thought it was over, we'd have dealt with it, and dealt with it, and dealt with it. It's not gonna go away until you absolutely deal with it. It's, it's, we've got to come to a good compromise for our county, not this group, not this group, our county. And I've taken the time to talk to a lot of people on this. You have this side that's definitely, you know, it's gotta stay right where it is. This side, it's gotta definitely be moved. But nobody's looking in the middle. Do you know that the majority of the people could care less? They honestly could care less. It was a war that was fought, that probably shouldn't have ever been fought, but it was fought. But nonetheless, in order to heal our community, we need to work together. So I'm all for, and have said it before, instead of taking something down, or moving it, or whatever, let's build something that honors the other side. If you, if you say there is two sides here, then let's build something that honors the other side. And let's quit trying to tear it down, move it, or do whatever we gotta do. Let's work on a very good compromise that heals our community. So I'm all for, I am all for, I'm not gonna make a motion except that it needs to go to a workshop, its own dedicated workshop, where we can discuss it. That's not, that's not where we're going with this.
It's not appropriate.
Commissioner Rawls? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
With that, with that, that's all I'm saying, is I do believe it needs its own workshop, and it needs to be discussed.
Okay, well, we have, David, please. Okay, we have, Sheila, please. We have a, we haven't used it in a while, but we usually keep the third Tuesday workshop open, that date open. Would the commissioners be able to meet on the third, third Tuesday dedicated workshop just to this issue? Where we can try to reach some kind of a compromise?
What's the date?
It's not actually mentioned, you ain't gonna be in that seat.
Well, then, then the next person can be, Sheila, and then you can deal with them.
I love Jeff Rawls.
Jeff, did you have something else to say, sir?
Honestly, the, you know, comments from the peanut gallery aren't gonna get anybody anywhere today, it's just, everybody's been heard. I think it is time for people just put their emotions aside for just a few minutes. You know, I, I really feel firmly that if this was put to the vote of the public, the public is gonna, is gonna vote their conscience. White, black, Hispanic, Asian, they're, they're gonna vote the way they feel. I don't know that, that the monument would, would stay or be moved, because it's never been asked of the public. But in my estimation, we're a legislative body, this is not a legislative issue, this is a citizens' issue that we should never gotten involved in.
That's right.
But we are where we are, so it, it sounds to me like this commission is gonna move this to a workshop, and we'll start the process all over again, and it sounds like we're gonna be working in a different direction, this time to leave it where it sits, but add, add other monuments that would represent other, other folks, and what their, their causes are, which I don't have a clue. But I will say, that I've spoken to black folks on the, on the, on this side of the issue, that says that they would just assume leave the monument where it sits. Not all black people are interested in seeing this being moved. I don't know that by moving the monument, you would accomplish anything except more division, more hatred, and discontent in the community. So I, I've stood my position from, from day one, I really think that we, we should consider putting this on the ballot, but I got no problem whatsoever attending the workshop.
Okay, well, by...
It's being November 17th.
Seventeenth.
Okay, so is everybody available on November 17th?
I won't be.
You won't be? Why not?
Because my last day is the 16th.
Oh, it is? Monday the 16th? No, you're, is that correct?
This commission expires.
Okay. Well, with that being the case, what do y'all think about doing it on the afternoon of the 10th? Well, I think you need to try to help us see this through. You were here when it started, and...
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have the 10th.
Yeah, let's do it on the afternoon of the 10th. I want Commissioner Goddard to be available. He started this process with us, and I'd like to, hopefully, he can be here at the end of that process, before he's no longer a commissioner. So does that mean we don't have a fifth commissioner from the, till the fourth, till the fourth Tuesday?
Yes, sir, you'll, he gets morning in, but the first meeting won't be until the, the second, fourth Tuesday of that month. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, while I'm here in this morning, as you'd like to clear the afternoon agenda of the 10th, to be statue-only discussion, if...
The only thing to come to workshop, other than this statue event, is something that is absolutely an emergency item and can't wait?
Absolutely, perfectly understood. If there's any other items that we need to discuss, I'll bring it back to you, and see if you wanna schedule a third Tuesday at that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So the statue issue will go on the, the meeting, on the workshop, on the 10th, at 2:00. Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and before we move out any further, staff sent me an email yesterday afternoon, and asked me to pull Item G from the consent agenda. And it, in order to, DOT had some comments they wanted to make, and the staff was talking to them about it, so I'm gonna pull Item G from the consent agenda at this time. Okay, Sheila, thanks for coming today, appreciate you. Okay, so here we go. Consent agenda, Item G is pulled, we're, they're gonna try to have it ready again for November the 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve...
Well, I haven't asked anybody that I wanna pull yet. Is there any other items that would like to be pulled, Commissioner Rawls?
E and F, please, just for a quick question.
E and F?
Yes. And they can both be held at the same time.
Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
And I have none, other than the one already pulled, the G, but it's not gonna be discussed, we're just gonna send it back to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Items A, B, C, D, H...
I and J.
I and J, yes.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Commissioner Rawls, Items E and F.
Has, are these policies, have they been revised? And what we're looking at, are these revised policies from HR? Or, it says update and detail and direction to the sick leave policy, are they looking for direction from us? Are we gonna have a workshop on this? Because typically...
We did have a workshop on it, Jeff, we passed it at the last workshop.
It did, but it says here, update, detail, and direction to the sick leave. Are we changing anything? Because what you've given us is a 2007 policy, not the revised policy.
No, the last workshop, we had one that was existing, and one that was updated.
This one, that's in here, are we approving this?
Yeah, that's the one that was updated, that we approved at workshop.
Because it says 2007 on it.
I didn't change it until it's actually been approved, and then I'll change the date, so that was my understanding.
Okay, that was, that was my question, okay.
You good now?
Yep.
Is your mic on?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we, that we approve Items E and F, as presented.
We have a motion, and a second, to approve Items E and F on the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
I'm, if I could real quick...
Yeah, sure.
Where the confusion's coming with me, is it says, update and detail and direction to sick leave policy. So I didn't know if we were gonna be discussing this more, because it, when I saw it 2007, I didn't, I don't have the old ones to go back to, and I'm like...
Well, they did at the last meeting. If you remember the last workshop, we went in, we had the old and the new on both those two policies. We had a red line for the new, and we approved the new language.
Honestly, it looks like this is 2007 policy that we're...
Right, she, what she just said, yeah, I'm good, but she just said, I don't, I don't disagree what you said whatsoever, so, no.
I'm just thinking, in the future, if we could show the new policy number... I'm just thinking, in the future, if we could show the new policy number, so it would, thank you.
I'll make it clear next time.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, with that being said, we're going to, uh, move on to item seven, which was supposed to have been at ten o'clock certain, but we're running a little late, so. It's the agreement for River Villas PUD agreement. Short and sweet, Mike, please. We've all read the package.
Um, Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning Development Services. This is an amendment to, uh, the, uh,
Before we pass it.
River Villas, um, PUD agreement. Staff, please, fairly simple. The, the request is to re, um, reduce the required distance between structures and structural improvements from ten, twenty feet to ten feet. Uh, River Villas was originally approved as a PUD by the county in nineteen ninety-four. It's, uh, thirty-one acres in size. Total number of manufactured home sites allowed is one hundred and twenty-four. This changed, will not increase that at all. It's basically, there was no side setbacks set in the PUD agreement. It said that the side setbacks will vary, but any structures or structural improvements would need a minimum of twenty feet separation. With the change in size and width of, of manufactured housing over the past few years, it's become difficult for them to meet that. They've requested a reduction from twenty feet to ten feet. We, um, staff ran that through, um, building and emergency services. They'd had no issues. Um, planning commission at their public workshop recommended unanimously to move this forward with a recommendation of adoption. Staff recommends you also that you approve that reduction in the PUD. You have any questions, staff? Try to do that quick.
Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
I'm sorry. Mike, I can't hear you very good, number one. If you, I don't know what's wrong with my hearing today, but, um...
Did we change the speakers, Jacob? Or are we just having trouble getting it high enough without making it hum?
The sound system wasn't changed at all, so I'm just trying to catch up behind each speaker and the different volumes that they have.
Okay, seems like we're having some issues today we just haven't had in the past.
I'll hold it closer.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Um, you said this will not increase the density out there whatsoever?
Right, the same number of units that are there are approved already, one hundred and twenty-four will remain. It just, the distance between, and really it comes into the car port, carports that they're attaching, the distance between that and the adjacent parcel and carport with the width of,
I got it.
of the manufactured housing is making a couple of the, a couple, a number of the sites unusable. So they've requested that reduction to ten feet, this, uh, separation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Goddard?
Now, how many sites are we, we talking about that need to be adjusted?
Totally approved as one hundred, oh, how many's remaining?
Well, see, I, I still, I'm, I'm one that thinks it needs to be twenty feet. I still do. I, I think the ten feet is just awfully close to be next to your neighbor. Of course, I also think twenty feet's awful close, but I, I'm more in tune with the twenty feet than I am the ten feet. So when you're saying a few that are being, uh...
I, and Commissioner Pickens asked me to try to find that information yesterday. I've been unable to, to get the exact number. Um, if you look at the aerial that's provided, um, it's a little hard to see, but you can see that there's probably maybe ten to twelve lots that are vacant right now that haven't, don't have anything on them. And I would, from what I was told when my discussions with the applicant, um, those are the ones that are, that are having, they're having difficulty putting, moving on and exist a new manufactured home and then also supplying the garage, uh, the carport, uh, over the, over the drive, driveway. That's running into the, the neighboring lot that has something on it. They're unable to use that lot because it, um, because they can't meet the twenty feet.
Okay, I...
I would say it's prob, we're probably talking ten to twelve lots.
Yeah, but you know, if you, if you look at this from what it is, it's a very dense residential community that people rent the lot and put their home on, if I'm not mistaken. So if that's the case, if they don't like being ten foot, then don't rent the lot. Which is my opinion.
I'm not comfortable with it.
Is that the case?
I'd like to know the exact number. I, I, I mean, I don't want it to be an open slate that you can put these on top of each other throughout the, the, the whole complex here.
But an amendment to the PUD would mean that for every parcel within that PUD, they all have to live by the same rules. So the PUD sets the zoning for that whole development.
Yeah, I, I'm...
Tear one down and, and bring a new one in and it would go to the new...
I go back to the same thing. I'm not comfortable with it being that close. I just, I just don't see that being a good thing. Uh, yeah, so, uh, my opinion is if you're going to, if you say there's going to be three houses or three places that need to be changed, I might be for that one. But to o, open the slate up that every house in there could be ten feet on top of another house, I'm not, I'm not for it.
Well, an amendment, the amendment they're requesting would potentially allow that.
Right, that, yeah, an open slate to do it throughout the whole complex.
Done, sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, along those lines, Michael, we, we talked yesterday. Um, my concern was with it being that close, um, and then the, I'd say some of these units are older, so they had different height requirements and things like that. So the new ones will come in and have a different height requirement. And then with more roof area is what they're asking for, I guess, or more area of a structure. And it's going to be closer, you know, where, where's the water going? And who is going to answer the question when the neighbor who's been there for twenty years starts getting flooded out? Does the commissioner in that district answer that question of how we're going to handle that drainage? Or does the planning department or the building department? Or do they, as a subdivision PUD, they take care of their own issues?
There, there is an approved, um, drainage, drainage system for the entire development today. Um, there is also maximum impervious surface for each lot that's set in the, in the PUD. Fifty percent maximum is, is for the PUD, so every lot has to meet that. And as I said, there's already an approved drainage system. And just an aside, I don't recall, and this doesn't guarantee anything, ever getting a call from anybody about flooding in that area. Now, Public Works may have had some other information, but that's just an aside. So the, I believe, from staff standpoint, with the approved drainage system that's already in place, um, with the maximum impervious surface, um, it's very unlikely that there would be any additional flooding, uh, from this, from reducing that side setback. Because what, what produces a runoff is your impervious surface. And that's fifty percent today regardless of that twenty or ten, the twenty-foot setback versus the ten-foot separation. You still can't exceed that fifty percent impervious surface for each parcel or each lot.
Okay, um, I've had complaints in certain older subdivisions when a larger unit comes in and it sounds like these units are larger and going to be closer to a neighbor. Who answers those questions of why they can put in there? Is it because it was in a PUD and it was approved? And if the neighbor doesn't like it, they have to move out of the PUD? Does that make sense?
Um, yeah, I mean, the PUD is the zoning. That sets the conditions for the zoning for this project. Every lot in there has to comply with, with that, with those restrictions. I mean, for instance, in the, in this PUD, um, it says the minimum lot size is forty nine, four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. And it also has a minimum depth of ninety feet. So with those two restrictions, you're, you're backed into fifty-five-foot wide lots in this. You know, although the PUD doesn't say that, the other restrictions backs, backs you into that. And what the applicant has indicated, and the reason they're requesting this, is that in nineteen ninety-four, when it was approved, the manufactured housing wa, was built narrower. And it's now wider. And with that width and providing the carport on the side, they, they're, they are unable to utilize, um, a number of lots. And I apologize, I just was not able to obtain the number of available lots that are out there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
Are these lots rented or owned?
Pardon?
Are these lots rented or owned? In other words...
Uh, these are, are rented lots.
If the developer holds the entire PUD.
Yeah.
I personally would have no objection, um, to allowing the, um, reduction in, in, uh, side setbacks. Um, if the DRC came up with nothing from, um, from a life safety perspective, there's really no reason why, um, I feel like we should, uh, deny them the increase.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mike, Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, didn't I hear you say they can still only use sixty percent of their surface?
Each, each lot today and in the future, even if, with or without this change, can only, there's only, there's a maximum of fifty percent impervious surface allowed.
Well, if you think twenty feet's not enough and you think ten feet, go to Alakna Lake Estates and see right on somebody's fence where, where these places are because of variances and things like that. I really appreciate you bringing that, this PUD like that because at least you know the rules going in, where somebody can't come in here for a variance and get right up to your house and put a, put a structure. So I'm in support of that, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think the main reason that I probably support this is just because it is a rental, one big PUD that the owner owns the lots. And so he can explain this to someone that comes in before they come in, or the people that are there or whatever. So if this was a, a PUD, excuse me, if this was a PUD that everybody owned their own lot, it would definitely be a different situation in my book. No, I'm good.
That was my concern, was coveting restrictions.
Does anybody have any further questions? Is the applicant here today? Okay, I don't see him. So, uh, with applicant not being here, I'll close the, um, public comment portion of this case and, uh, ask for a motion on the, uh...
Mr. Chairman, we need to read the ordinance by title if we can, please.
Yes, sir, we got it. If you'll give us the opportunity, if you, how about calling us down after we do something wrong instead of before? Sorry. Oh, I just got the evil eye. Okay. Motion, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, make a motion that we amend the county zoning map and ordinance of Put, of the county of Putnam, state of Florida, amending the Putnam County zoning map for certain parcels of land from PUD to PUD, establishing conditions for the use under the PUD zoning, providing for severability, and effective case, case number PUD twenty dash zero zero two. And do I need to make in my motion about the setbacks? Or, okay, so we're, the, take staff recommendations to move setbacks from twenty to ten feet inside this PUD. Is that right?
Yeah, I, between the structures or, or structural improvements, yes.
Structure?
Between, the, the reduction is from ten feet to twenty feet between structures.
Okay, from twenty feet to ten feet between structures on this PUD. Thank you.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Oh, did you deny?
I'm against it.
Okay, it was four to one, uh, Commissioner Goddard descending. Sorry, Commissioner. And let, um, that's all you had for us today, wasn't it, Mike? Okay, good deal. So, uh, next, we're going to go to item eight, uh, remarks from the clerk of court, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have no items today.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're going to move into appointments. Uh, I'd like to start with, um, on, um, public comments over, Tim, you want to speak again? Okay, thank you. On, uh, page number one seventeen of your pack, packet, there was a, um, item that they wanted to, uh, reappoint TJ Smith to the Terrace Development Council. I believe that has to be a nomination and a second and what have, or a nomination and a vote? Is that correct? Because it's not a, a, it's not, it's not a district appointment?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, well, I'd like to nominate TJ Smith to the Terrace Development Council. We have a nomination, I don't think we have to have a second, but thank you for that. The, all in favor, uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, and we're going to start with any additional appointments. Uh, Commissioner Rawls, do you have any appointments today?
Um, on the affordable housing, um, I'm reading the requirements for at large. Uh, I came and intended to nominate John Nelson, uh, but I'm not sure if he meets the requirements, to be honest with you. So, um...
Would there be a possibility for you to meet with, uh, Mr. Suggs and Rich and see if he meets that? Because...
I know, I know he has a consulting company, um, regarding, uh, affordable housing and sheltering and stuff like that, but I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I'm not so sure that if Mr. Nelson doesn't meet this, that we don't need to change the rules. No, I'm not kidding. I'm not kidding at all. If he doesn't, if he doesn't match this, being the, the past executive director of the Plaque of Housing Authority, if he doesn't meet the Affordable Housing Committee, then our rules are a little too strong. So, yes, if you would get with him, I think he'd be an excellent choice on your part, yes.
Thank you.
You have any more, Commissioner? Was that it? Commissioner Goddard, did you have any appointments today, sir? Uh, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
And I have no additional. With that being said, we're going to move down to the, uh, county administrator for a few short comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Again, it's good to be back in the big room. It's good to have Mr. Smith back with us today as well. Absolutely. Uh, no comments, uh, this, uh, this morning, sir, related to, uh, the, um, meeting or, uh, work that's being performed? As you heard the progress report this morning on your projects, there's a lot going on in Putnam County. But I would like to take this opportunity, if I could. Uh, today is going to be, uh, the last day that our deputy county administrator sits with us at the dais in the BSCC room.
Sits on that side of this.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner. So, uh, uh, Mr. Reynolds' next role will be to move down to the other end of the dais, uh, as the, uh, clerk of the court elect to, uh, take on that new, new role in leadership that Mr. Reynolds is going to be beginning here in January. Uh, but it would be remiss of me if I didn't take this opportunity. Uh, I've, I've worked with Mr. Reynolds now for six years. It was a, uh, an opportunity for me, uh, when I came to work at the city of Palack as the city manager, to have the ability to work with Mr. Reynolds. The opportunity, I should say, to work with Mr. Reynolds. And I've said this to, to Matt multiple times, uh, when we put budgets together and we hold our meetings and we have the conversations that he and I have in our office, uh, that I would, um, after thirty years of service in public service, I'd put Mr. Reynolds up against anyone in the state of Florida as far as what he does for us. And, uh, you know, it's going to be, uh, a bittersweet day for me on Friday, uh, as Mr. Reynolds moves over and transitions to his new role. Uh, but it will be, uh, an absolute pleasure for me to see him sitting at the other end of the dais. And knowing that he's not leaving Putnam County, he's just moving into a different leadership role. And so, uh, Matt, uh, to you personally, uh, thank you so much for six years of, of working as close together as we have. I think we developed a, uh, a unique friendship as well as bond. And I hope that it continues as you, uh, move into the next role and next, uh, venture in your life. And, uh, it's nice to know that you're not far away, you know, so, well, congratulations, sir. It's been, it's been an honor.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Suggs?
No, sir, I'll leave out the part he's got big shoes to fill. But, uh, but anyway, thank you so much for that, uh, opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I think he's up to it, but you're right, he's got some big shoes to fill. Um, thank you for that. Uh, Colonel Commando, did you have anything for us today?
No, only that I'll, I need to speak to each one of you kind of offline, just to, let me chase you down today.
Okay. Commissioner, comments or requests? Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I'm going to make comments. Matt, congratulations. It is going to... Yeah, I'm gonna make comments, Matt, congratulations, it is gonna be good to see you on the other side. And just, everyone knows, I go out and I check out all of Putnam County, which I love, but, uh, I was just recently out on the county road, uh, County Forest Road 66, going out to Fort Gates. And, uh, this is directly after the storm, and I was impressed, it, uh, it's actually, I could actually travel it without having to be in four-wheel drive, all the way down to the landing, which we're, we're almost got it ready, we'll, someday, we're gonna have that whole thing in operation. But, uh, I always say it, we live in a beautiful county, we need to go out and look at it, it's wonderful, and we have people like Tim, looking for our islands, and honestly, that is a major asset for our county, and I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, Commissioner Goddard, I don't think it's a county road yet, I don't think they signed the form.
Forest road.
So, it's a forest road. Matt, I do wanna thank you for all the years that, um, I know that I come in there and I want the answer I want, that's not always the answer I get. But, you've always been honest and fair, very knowledgeable, know exactly where you need to go to get the answer, and, uh, you're, you're really going to excel in your new position. And again, we all know that Mr. Smith has done a wonderful job there, and I expect you to do even more, because, um, it's gonna be nice to see you sitting up here with us, so, I look forward to that, and I'm glad you got elected, and, uh, Putnam County is gonna be better and in capable hands with you there. Uh, gentlemen, on December 5th, if you read the paper, the Antelacan Christmas celebration is going to happen, it's gonna be a stationary parade, I figure that kinda, yeah. You're gonna have a parade float, and you're gonna park it, and you're gonna light it, and people are gonna come by you instead of the parade going by them. With social distancing, um, we are going to have fireworks that night, we're moving them to the north side of the lake, which means if you're in data field, parked on the backside of second base, you're gonna see the fireworks right above your head. If you're in data field, you're gonna sit in a lawn chair socially distancing away, um, we're gonna try this very, we're gonna try to do it a very positive manner. If you spread out throughout the town, you'll be able to see the fireworks anywhere, probably even sitting at CVS at the intersection of 20 and 315. So, a lot of works going into it, a lot of social distancing, a lot of masks, a lot of, uh, hand washing stations, elves walking around with sanitizers, not true elves, representatives of the elves community.
Think we figured there was gonna be some real elves there?
Well, yes, maybe, you never know in this room what takes place. Santa Claus will be there, and, uh, cookies and milk and water will be passed out, but again, that'll be behind a line, and people will be social distanced, wearing masks and gloves. So, we're gonna try to make this event a very real event, and, uh, we, we feel like it's gonna be big, but I think by spreading out like we are, that it should be very, very beneficial to our community, and, um, it'll be a, it'll be a first, uh, yeah, so, hey, but at least we're doing something, and we wanna continue that, that process on and, and not lose a lot of money on fireworks, so. Y'all get ready for December 5th, I'll see you then.
Okay, thank you, sir, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Turner, and I'll just echo the sentiments of Administrator Suggs and the other commissioners, um, I really didn't know Matt, I had heard of him, and everything that I had heard when he was at the city was, um, how well he did everything, and, uh, he had no weaknesses, so... When he came to, excuse me, when we stole him from the city, excuse me, when he moved from the city, uh, to the county, um, I found that out very quickly, um, that Matt has no weaknesses, and he was always available for me. I'm not a budget person, and he worked with me, um, to make me understand the budget, he broke it down to where all of us could understand it a lot easier than the first budget we had. Matt, I didn't know if anybody would happen to say that you have some big shoes to fill, you know that, but you have some special shoes to fill. Tim Smith has been such a fantastic clerk, uh, for 20 years, and, um, and you'll do a fine job, you're up to the task, I know, so... Um, I do wanna thank the two ladies that were here today, Marion Braddock and, um, Sheree Nelson Register, for serving on the, um, committee to try to come up with a relocation for the statue, I appreciate them doing that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pickens, um, I do wanna reiterate a couple of things, besides, uh, following up the, um, other commissioners on wishing Matt well, and, and, uh, Tim knows how big a fan I am of his, we've been friends since we were teenagers, so, um, which has been a long time. Yeah, I know, but, uh, anyhow, um, with that being said, um, I just want to, again, give my gratitude to the people that served on that statute committee. That had to be one of the toughest committees that, that anybody had to serve on that I've known of, and a lot longer than I've been a commissioner. So, thank them for their very, very hard work and trying to get us where we are today, it, they are good recommendations, um, hopefully, when we get to, uh, to workshop, which is where I think this should go, that we can finally put this to bed one way or another and, and start healing our community, um, I really hope we can do that. And with that being said, if there's no other business to come before the board today, I hereby call this meeting adjourned.